Business meeting of June 17. Roll call, I'm just gonna say who's here. Wayne Adams, Joanna Blanchard, Laura Iforis, Lisa O'Connor, Brian Page, Chris Redding, Chris Wild, and Jack Valet.
I think I hear that coming down.
Who's calling? I don't hear you yet, no, I just heard you say. Majority votes?
4.6.
Thank you. Pledge allegiance, we actually have a flag at this time.
Yes, you.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you have a motion? Include the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Just to clarify, the agenda we're approving had already been amended to include the discussion and approval of the superintendent's evaluation on the new business item eight. All in favor of the motion? Minutes of the meetings, how can they get a motion to approve the business meeting minutes of May 20?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Motion to approve the business finance operations of June 3?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? For a motion for the business meeting, June 3, 2014?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? I've got three corrections to make. I gotta get to them. Business meeting. Under call to order says Chairman Valet.
Oh, okay.
And me, the meeting time started at 5:30 instead of 6:30.
Okay.
And under the PAT contract, it says unanimous approval. I have recused myself from the vote.
Were you the only one?
No.
No. Wayne did too.
Okay, sorry about that.
Need a motion to accept them as amended?
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor is amended? Unanimous. Looking to get a motion to approve the policy meeting of June 3?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I, I'm not a member of that committee.
And she's got you, my name switched up. I'm the member of the committee, she was in attendance.
Okay. As amended?
So moved.
Second Jill?
Oh, yes, second.
All in favor is amended? Unanimous, thank you. Now we have the opportunity for public comment, if there's anybody in the public, who cares to speak?
Yes, a bunch of us are here in regards to the Page School half-day kindergarten program at Everett and Tewa and Oakdale, as well as the class sizes for the incoming.
Can we just ask one question when you're gonna speak? If you could stand up and identify yourself, just so we know who you are.
I'm sorry.
Please feel free after.
Sure, I'm Rachel Zahn, I'm a resident of West Newbury, and I have a third grader going into fourth grade at Page, first going into second grader at Page, and my youngest is going into kindergarten at Page. We were hoping for the half-day kindergarten program, and we attended, I guess they're calling it the information night in April. Unfortunately, it wasn't too informative for half-day parents, and I had voiced some concerns about that, but, anyway, so then the next letter I got asked me if I'd like my child to go to half-day PM kindergarten at Page, or AM kindergarten at Sweetser or AM kindergarten at A now, and the obvious choice for us was Page, because that's where our older children go. And I was back that afternoon, morning, didn't matter to us, as long as our son was in his own classroom in a half-day program, and then the next letter I got told us, and then I didn't hear anything else, and then the next letter I received in the mail said that they did away with the half-day class in favor of a third full-day class, and that the half-day children were gonna be integrated into that full-day program. And I had some concerns about that, because I've had a couple friends who had children in the half-day program this year that was integrated, and they said their children came home crying. Some did like it, to be fair, some did, they said there wasn't a problem, but some did say that the children came home crying, said they were part-time friends, they had concerns because we, some parents volunteered at that school, and we would see the children who were supposed to be dismissed at 11:15, they put on the bus at 11, so that the full-day kids would get to lunch, so it cut the half-day kindergarten kids' time, and that's, you know, that's an hour and 15 minutes a week, times full school, yeah, that's a lot of time. So I think we all just, different people have questions, if you could answer them regarding what's going on. And the reason that was given for the half-day switch to three full-day classrooms was that it would keep in line with the smaller class sizes, but the same day, first and third grade respective parents backed up saying that their children's class sizes were gonna be larger, so that kinda negates the reasoning for the kindergarten. So I think we're just confused and hoping to get some answers if we could.
Sure, I can do that, yeah. So do you want me to respond now, or do you want me to respond with the information that I brought for my report?
I'm gonna leave it up to you, I mean technically, it's public comment, we don't respond, and I know you haven't prepared any reports, so it's up to you.
Right, so it's on the agenda for tonight, and I have a lot of information that I can provide, so fairly typically, we don't respond, we don't have a conversation, you know, after the public comment, so here's what I'll do, if there is, if there's still an unanswered question at the end of all the information that I provide, I'm happy to talk with anybody right after our meeting and answer individual questions that you might have, that might be more pertinent to just your situation, and I think you're gonna, you'll find all the information that you're looking for tonight.
Okay, great.
Okay.
Do we have anybody else with public comment? Thank you very much.
Alan from Agnew, for instance, I have, I agree with her, and then you wait, like, whatever, I'm on the opposite side where my daughter is going for full day next year, and paying the tuition for a full-day, you know, class, but then at the same time, the fact that all curriculum is going to still be taught, and two and a half hours time span is kind of, I was concerned to me, I'm not paying the tuition, I want her to be able to take her time with the content, I know that, you know, we can't teach any more than the half-day kids, but for her, that's what I know with other programs, is even though the day is longer, the curriculum's the same however it's spread out through the day, and I just, I was concerned.
I think I'll be able to answer that part, too.
Okay.
Yeah, so I talked today with Deb Lay, and I have a lot of that information that you're looking for, so about the actual programming at the school, so I'll try to get to that first, and I'll check in, so it won't be quite as sterile as I'm just gonna give you information, I'll check in to make sure that I'm on the right page as I, as I go through. Okay.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you. Onto the superintendent's report.
Okay, so here we go. All right. I think what I wanna do is talk a little bit about the programming, because I hadn't anticipated doing that for the report that I give, so I'll start there, and then I'll go into the report that I had planned, okay, which will be really to address the overarching class sizes, not only at Page but through the district, and I think that will, that will help. So I'll try to recap the things that I just heard about. So the first part is about last year and students being dismissed early, I think for 11:15, but that was when their bus left, they actually were dismissed more around 11:05 or 11 o'clock. So I verified with Deb Lay today, that in fact, she's been in touch with the bus company, it's coming at 11:30, it will be a full half-day program, there's no, you know, early dismissal time for the students, all of the half-day students will be integrated into the morning, the AM session that they would have, so by doing that, they won't miss any time for early dismissals, or the holidays that we would be coming for the morning anyway, so that will actually be a pretty big benefit. One of the things I heard about, not tonight, but in talking with Deb Lay, is there were also concerns about missing parts of the day when there were early dismissals and that sort of thing. So that's the reason for the AM portion being sort of a preferred slot for the students. There are five students who were signed up for part-time or half-day kindergarten, so the, the five students have been distributed, two students in one class and three students in another class. The, I'm just trying to think of all the different things, so the literacy and math component of the program will be focused in the morning part, so that everybody gets that part during the day, but the, the rotation of PER, that, that sort of thing, will be reserved for the students who are in the full-day kindergarten. So you'd be wondering about, well, how will my student get exposure to arts, as an example? And the answer to that is, you may know about our innovation schoolwork that we've done, and the curriculum that we're about to launch, which, the acronym is STEAM, S-T-E-A-M, so science, technology, engineering, art, and math. So the arts are more integrated into what we're doing for everybody, rather than, and so is all of the curriculum, rather than it being, now you're doing science, now you're doing art, it's not compartmentalized like that, not just for kindergarten, but for the whole school, so we're at the beginning of that, that work. Let's see, another question, some of the, the hard feelings that I heard about from last year, Deb Lay talked directly to the teacher about those. So there was some information that came my way from a parent, you may even be here, I only know you through email, so the information came to me, I discussed that information with Deb Lay, and she addressed it directly with the teachers. So they understand where there were some rough spots last year, and how students were being addressed, or, you know, how they were integrated or not. So I think we've really looked at all of those rough spots as we go through, so that parents and kids won't experience the same kind of disconnect that may have occurred last year. So I'm hoping that kindergarten will be a brighter experience, and if it's not, Dustin Gray will be our new principal, he's already been working through some of the scheduling for next year, and certainly, if you, if you're not comfortable with Dustin, feel free to email me, I'm happy to talk with you, you know, about the individual experiences of your students. So then we also wanna talk about the class sizes, and how the district is paying attention to the sizes of classes, not just at Page but across the whole district. So I've, I've organized some materials that school committee has here, so that I can refer to them as we go through, but I'll be discussing them in a lot of detail, so it won't be a mystery that we have some papers here and, and that you don't. So the first part is that I have to identify priorities throughout the school district, and I did that when I first got here, back in 2012, and kindergarten was one of those priorities for me when I entered the scene, and it wasn't just about kindergarten in 2012, it was about kindergarten, I had a year, a previous year's history as well. So when I looked, so I did a historical point of view about kindergarten and all the classes, and when I look at the kindergarten class sizes back in 2011 to 2012, you all wouldn't know about that, because your children are just coming in, but we had class sizes of 26 and 27 at Bagnell in the half-day kindergarten class.
Sweetser.
Oh, Sweetser?
Sweetser.
Oh, sorry about that, at Sweetser, yeah, I don't wanna give wrong information. So when I look at that information, that immediately was a red flag for me about how class sizes, well, the staffing patterns, right? So it wasn't just there that I was concerned, when I looked down at Page School for grade three that year, there were 29 students in the two classes that were scheduled. It didn't stop, Page School, grade four, 27, 27, and 29, and then Donahue and Bagnell for grade six, with upwards of 26 students per class, so 24 to 26 was what they were struggling with. So when I looked at that, when I got into the district, it was, it was certainly a red flag for me to, that we were staffing, or that, that's sort of where our value was, you know, I have a different value than, than that. So then, what I had to contend with when I came here for July of 2012 was, the staffing pattern had already been established for the upcoming year, so when you come in in July, just like if I were leaving and a new superintendent were coming in, the staffing pattern is already set, I've already done that, and whoever came in in July would have that in front of them. So when I looked at the staffing pattern for that year, 2012, 2013, it went along in the same sort of a pattern, I have Donahue with class sizes of 26, 27, 27, Bagnell the same way for grade four, Page the same way, Bagnell for grade five, 27, 28, 28, and then Donahue for grade six, 27 and 28 students. So that kind of a pattern was a real concern for me when I got to the district, I could see that, I was hired to bring that world-class vision, and that was a little bit askew for me as far as where we're going, that's more of a traditional pattern, so when I read that for staffing, I knew what was going on budget-wise. So budget-wise, what happens is, when you're tight, you cut staff, because staff is about 70% of your budget, staff and benefits represents the lion's share of the budget. And I had some experience with that in other districts, and I also had some experience in how to make things a little bit different than that, and the approach that I've been taking is called zero-based budgeting, and it's where you look at, oh, what are all your resources, and then what are your values, and how do you resource your values, rather than the same old pattern over and over again. So that year, we had Mike Bergeron as our school business manager, and Mike and I immediately looked at how we might want to bring some relief to these numbers. So I didn't tell you all of the high numbers, because the information that the school committee has actually represents some of the relief that I brought. So even though I have two, three, four, five classes that I mentioned with 26, 27 kids, 28 kids in them, there were actually three more grade levels that had that across the district, upwards of 29 students per class. So Mike and I infused three teachers into the mix, knowing that we couldn't relieve everybody's stress, and so how did I do that? I talked with the principals, they pretty much came up with, the youngest students needed to have the relief first, so for instance, I brought in some grade one teachers, and I can, I can actually tell you where those teachers went. So I brought in a grade one teacher at Sweetser, a grade one teacher at Bagnell, grade three at Page, and I was able to cobble together enough funding for guidance council at the middle school, they had cut one of the two guidance councils of the middle school. So you can see the negative spiral that had begun with staffing patterns. So I realized that in order to repair this, it was gonna take a little bit of time for me to do it. In one year, I put together some, what I call one-time money, to fund the three or four, counting the guidance department, the four positions, but, and I'll explain what one-time money is, one-time money doesn't carry over to the next year. So the state gave us some funding that we hadn't anticipated, per pupil funding that year. It was unusual, we hadn't anticipated getting that money, and I put that, and I cobbled together some other funds around professional development, that were not targeted for staffing. Staffing money carries year to year, this was just one-time money. So I already knew at, when I did that, I was bringing, bringing a little relief, but I had to, in my budgeting, know I was sort of running in deficit mode, because I had committed money that wasn't gonna carry forward. So that's, that's a little bit of what I came into in 2012. So what did I do? You know, that's, that's sort of a question that people would wonder about, how did we get to where we are right now? And in order to get to where we are right now, July 2012, so this is 10 days on the job, so I'd been here 10 days, and I put a memo out to the school committee, and I said I was willing to commit to three teachers for the elementary, just like I talked to you about, and that one guidance counselor, and so we brought some immediate relief for that year, but in the context of what everybody was going through, I mean, it made a dent, but it, it wasn't the cure. So in the upcoming year, for the budget season, on March 4, I put out to the school committee my budget proposal, and in my budget proposal, I had three big-picture target areas, because if you don't have priorities, then your money just is distributed across lots of little things, and you never feel like you get traction or you don't get anywhere. So I'm gonna just take a minute to read a couple of the bulleted areas. So we had priority number one, every student has equal opportunity to reach their dreams, reduce or eliminate student fee structures, stabilize low class sizes, increase early education access for full-day pre-K and K for every student, these are big-picture goals that I, I set out on. Priority two, all academic arts and athletic opportunities are rigorous and relevant, accelerate learning with, what translates into some of our curriculum work that we were just completing now. Supplemental instruction is around providing students with advanced learning opportunities, bring in an electronic curriculum, begin that work, improve facilities and ground. Priority three, a future of choice for every student, integrate 21st century skills, which we were calling HOLs back then, habits of learning, and which we call adaptive leadership skills right now. Expand and align the K-12 curriculum using areas of concentration, that work translated into our innovation schoolwork that you may have read about, and expand early college and career opportunities. So when I started to put this work together for tonight, it was really pretty rewarding for me to see that, a year ago, when I made these priorities, today, a year later, I have made a pretty big dent in, in pretty much all of those different areas. So let's talk more specifically about the class sizes, you know, because that's what I think everybody's area of focus for, for right now, for tonight. So this year coming up, this year that we're just completing, the 2013-14 school year, this year, we had fairly consistently reduced class size to the 23 or below level, with several classes even being below the 20 level. Now 20 is really kind of a key figure here, and the reason 20 is so key, there are two reasons, one is that it's a contractual obligation that I have, so the teacher's contract, before this new contract, actually read that I would be maintaining class sizes of 20, and you all just heard, that they were maintaining class sizes of upwards of 30, not 20. So I had a real obligation to be true to the negotiated language in the contract. The second part is, I have a real sense of the level of personalization of learning for students when you get below that 20 level, so I committed to the faculty here and to the administration, that I would continue to push on school of class size, to get down below 20, and some teachers pushed on me and said, well, what do you mean below 20? Like, what are we gonna be faced with? And I said, well, I think we could get down to about 15 or 16 students per class, and they laughed, they said that couldn't possibly be the case. So that, you know, that, that was just a goal I had. So in the upcoming school year, we are beginning to see that class sizes are starting to go down to the 15 or 16 mark, so let me just give you a snapshot of where we are. So in, I'll try to, my, my tracking skills aren't great, so I'll try to track better this time. So for Sweetser, we have an all-day K size of 20, and we have two half-day kindergartens of 11. At Bagnell, we have two full-day Ks of 14 and 15, and we have half-day Ks at 16, two of them, AM and PM. At Page, we have three full-day Ks with the integration of five students, and the class sizes are 16, 16, and 17. So I'm feeling pretty accomplished for kindergarten, because those will start to track through the system and become our new norm. Now the other part that I, I addressed when I got here, it was sort of a sensitive subject at first, was school choice. Now I don't have anything against students from other districts coming here, it, my approach has been translated sometimes as me wanting to, you know, exclude kids from our system, or not having a value for other syst, for other students, that's just not the case. But I have a greater value for our students having access to very low class sizes than I do for bringing other students into the district. So I don't use the $5,000 amount that we get for school choice students, I don't use that money to close our budget, that should be supplemental money, not part of our core budget, so that's a shift that I've begun to make in the system. So this year, we have no school choice students in our kindergarten classes, and because I started this last year, we have no school choice students in our first-grade classes either. We do have students who had been accepted prior to that, who are matriculating through our system, and once you're a Penn Tucket student through school choice, you are a Penn Tucket student, you are not exited, so, and I wouldn't have any, any intention to exit kids anyway, I mean, once we made that commitment, we have to stand by it. Now some of our classes that are still a little bit of a concern for me, have upwards of eight or nine students who are school choice students in our classes. So when you think about that distributed across three classes as an example, that's three students per class that, you know, maybe wouldn't have been there for our class sizes. So I'm gonna go through some of the numbers right now for you, so that you can get a mental map of what we're talking about, you already know the kindergarten. So in grade one, we have at Sweetser, three classes, 14, 15, and 15. We have Bagnell, 17, 17, and 18, and we do have a Page class, as you know, grade one, at 24 and 23. Now I'm gonna circle back and tell you how we're gonna solve that, it won't, I don't intend to do it this year, but at next year, you'll see the solution, and so give me a minute and we'll circle back and, and talk about that. Grade two for Sweetser, 23, 24, 24. Bagnell grade two, all 17s, four 17s. Page, 19, 17, 18. Grade three, Donahue, 23, 24, 23. Bagnell, 19 and three 20s. Page, 21 and 22. Now you're saying, well, what happened to the 23 and 24 that were in grade three? That was a projection, that was early numbers, this is what it is right now, so it's at 22 and 21. Grade four over at, I'm gonna do this part quickly, so grade four across the whole system is between 18 and 22. Grade five across the whole system is between 20 and 22. Grade six across the whole system is between 19 and 22. So in two years, I've brought, I think, dramatic relief to the system. Now, I said I was gonna circle back and tell you where some of these 24s are gonna go for next year, because we have them both at Page and at Donahue, you know, that are matriculating through. So let's talk about Page. So at Page, and this is not just Page, it's also Donahue, we have four classes of grade six. The usual pattern is three classes, so we have a bubble of students in extra class. When those students move to grade six.
Seven.
Well, I'm sorry, from six to seven, thank you. So, I do appreciate the monitoring, you know, I can only get that kind of attention at home usually, but, but when they move to grade seven, two positions now will come back into the system, and now those two positions will give relief to two classes. I could have stretched our budget or made some other decisions, but then, what you would see is, when those two senior positions come back into the system, you lose your newer teachers, and you're also paying benefits to people who are now unemployed. So I've gotta be strategic about how I do it. So it's not that I think 23 or 24 students is, you know, next to sliced bread, but I also know, compared to where we were, it's a whole lot better than, than what it was. So again, Page has a grade one and a grade three teacher that I'd like to bring in next year, and once I do that, there'll be three classes per grade, and yes, we'll have to look at, is there a bubble that occurs, because you never can predict when a bubble's gonna occur, and we'll have to address that, but that's how I plan to do it. But that's how I plan to do it, you know, over at Page. Now, Bagnell...
Let's go quick question, just about that Page first grade for next year with the higher numbers. Knowing that a lot of parents do private kindergarten at times, might not have gotten them into the system. I know three houses on my street just sold. I don't know who's moving in.
You never know.
Just wondering, if you end up getting a few new students, is there something that could be put into place for next year?
Could be. So I'm really sensitive to that part.
Because there's only two classes.
Because there are only two classes. So there are lots of different ways that we could approach that. My last way would be to hire a teacher. Because as I just said, I could hire that teacher, and next year have to lay off that teacher, because I've got two people coming back into the system. So it may be that I could provide some relief with an aide. You know, there are lots of different things that I could take a look at. But that would be down the road. Right now, as far as I know, that's what we've got. And we have a pretty stable system as far as the numbers of students per class. So I've got a lot of experience from cities. In cities, you have these wide swings that occur with people moving in and out. And so, you know, I appreciate how stable our population is here, but if there were some kind of a bump up, then obviously I would be, the school committee would be expecting, and rightly so. They would wanna see, what do we do in that case? Now, another sort of guarantee that I'd be taking action is that in this last contract that we just negotiated, in there, I made a commitment to the teachers that if there were class sizes above 20, I'd be working directly with the teachers' union to bring relief to them. Now, the teachers' union, the teachers' association knows these numbers. We shared this sort of information when we were negotiating with each other, coming up with language. They know I can only do what I can do. So they're not gonna push on me too hard for some of these things that they know I've already got a plan for to bring relief in. But obviously, if something were to occur, I would take a look at that. Now, so far tonight, I've only talked about regular education classes, what you'd experience in the regular class of students if you visited. What I haven't talked about is special education and all the supports that go into special education. So if you think about the kind of repair work that I had to do for the regular classroom, what would you imagine I have had to do? What was on my plate when I had to take a look at special education? Now, that's just a rhetorical question, you'll have to answer. But I can tell you that the first resource for money was to drain the resource of special education, and then the second resource was to go to regular education to drain that resource. So right now, this, in this current year, here's a list of the special education supports I'm putting in just at Page. This is only at Page. And I'm focused there because I know you all are from Page, right? So I moved a .8 special education teacher to a 1 FTE, one full-time. I moved another .8 special education teacher to .8, to a 1 FTE. Now, you would think that, well, that's just a little tiny bump up. When you're talking the salary of a teacher, you're talking thousands of dollars here, folks. So, you know, this isn't crumbs that I'm talking about. I moved a .8 speech and language pathologist to full-time. We have a .4 school psychologist moving to .5, but it's no longer a shared position, it's at the school. So it's actually a combined position, it's a full-time position, but it's half-time school psychologist, half-time coordinator of special education. So it's actually, you get a twofer here. You get a full-time school psychologist and you get a full-time coordinator of special education, because they're stationed at the school. And I've added one new special education teacher to the mix over at Page. So that's just at Page, but I wanted to give you a sense that it's not just the classroom teachers that we're talking about, that's only one piece of it. The last part that I wanted to highlight is, and I'm happy to share this with you all, this is the laundry list of all the improvements that we're making to the district this year. So, yes, class size is really important to me. The classroom, the teacher, the student, and the curriculum, that's the core, what we're here, you know, we're really all about. But if I don't give the rest of the system, middle school, high school, grounds, you know, if I don't address all of the system, then what people would do would be pretty sour, except for one thing, class size, and they would probably not recognize that. People have a short memory for improvements and pretty long memory for what's wrong. So here are just a couple of the things that we've addressed. First one I'm gonna do is the financial one. So really big, and what everybody should be really focused on here is, next year, we will no longer be using something called E and D, excess and deficiency funding, to support the budget. Excess and deficiency is sort of like a way of storing up some cash for an emergency. The district doesn't have what I would consider any funding there. We have a couple thousand dollars, that's about it. So in a town, you'd have a million dollars. And if you consider our budget compared to the town budget, you'd be expecting us to have millions of dollars, because we have a bigger budget than even the towns do, right? So this is gonna be the first year, we're not taking $400,000, $500,000 out of the system one year to pay for the next year. Sort of like using a credit card. So when I got here, we had a history of using this credit card over and over, and I've decreased the amount to the point now where, next year, we're no longer gonna be taking that money, and we'll start to bank it, so that we have money for an emergency. So that's a really big thing, and in the context of all this emergency around staffing, we've been able to do that. As you may know, we reduced the fees for athletics, music, clubs, we've reduced all of those by half, and we're hoping to continue to eliminate those in the next couple of years, so our kids won't have to pay for anything that they want to participate in. Let's see, what else have we got here? You may have seen the bulldozers. So we got a little bit of a project going on. When I got here, the word was that we wanted to resurface the tennis courts and the track, and with the help of Greg LeBrecq, we figured out, and the school committee, we figured out, how we could not just give you a new track and new infield and new tennis courts, because the subsoil was all worn out. You could resurface it, but we'd be doing that forever. We got new track infield and tennis courts, and we got new softball field, new practice field, and new field hockey field online, with no additional cost to taxpayers, and reduced fees for students. You may have heard about our innovation schools that we've done. Innovation school work is very cutting-edge, and it's a very good part of our brand. People are looking for innovative practices, they don't want the same old thing. You may know from your own children, and maybe even from your own point of view, we live in a designer society. People want what is important to them individually, not collectively. That's where we're headed. We're trying to give students individually what is important to them. Not only to students, but also to teachers. We want teachers to be creative agents too. No longer moving from, like, today's lesson is to move from page 25 to 24. Those days are over. We wanna create thinking people, and in order to do that, teachers have to be thinking people as well. So it's a new day that we're about to expand upon. We've got courses at Northern Essex Community College, where our students are getting free college courses. They're taking dual credit for free. It's unheard of. We're giving free college credit. We have sports safety, sports medicine, public safety, digital sculpture, digital painting. We are aligned with a school called Noman that was just awarded the top prize for computer graphics worldwide, not nationally, worldwide. We have some really great things coming up. So I won't go through any more of this, you get the idea. So I get a little bit, I guess, anxious when I'm pushed on for a class size of 23 or 24, when it's part of a bigger picture that we're really talking about. So I get it, I hear you, and I'm here to help out as I can, and I promise that, I will help out. But we are involved in a bigger effort to make Penn Tucket into something really exquisite for all of you and for your students. So, you know, it's not usual for me to answer questions, but if you had a question too, I'm happy to answer them, but I'm also happy to meet with you individually, if you have some individual questions, you know, that I didn't answer here. But that's kind of the big picture. I met recently with the Penn Tucket Athletic Association. They were pushing on me about uniforms. And I met with them, they didn't have the big picture about how we have made this financial shift, all the good work, and once they did, they said, we get it, we know where you're headed, we appreciate your help. And I think if more people had that kind of big picture, they would be more tuned to it. So I never mind explaining it, but it's, I can never get, like, all the information out, so even despite all the news, media releases and all that, like, one article in the newspaper that comes out in sort of a negative way, it sort of like does 10 times the damage that 10 of my media awards can do. So, you know, I'm trying my best to get all that information out, but if you ever have a question, all you gotta do is email me or come in and meet with me, I'm happy to meet, and I'm happy to share information and give you all that. So I'm hoping that helps to explain how far we've come in two years. I hope it explains that, if you give me just a little bit more time, you'll be in a really good spot, and so will everybody, you know, across the district, class size-wise, and in these other ways too. So are there other questions here that I could answer? I'm happy to do it, because you all have lived it. So like, these folks at the table, like, when I'm going through all this information, it's like, oh yeah, you did that, you did that, you did, yeah, we had to do that. So it's different, because you all haven't lived it as we have, and so I hope that helps to explain. So anybody got a question, or if you need more information, just give me an email, I'm happy to share. Yes?
I do have a question. I'm Shelby, and we have a half-day pre-K right now in kindergarten. And everything you said sounds great. I also have a first grader as well.
Oh, good, okay.
A second grader.
At Page, right? Yeah. At Page?
At Page.
Okay.
And she was in the half-day program.
Yeah.
And it was, I liked it. My major concern is that we were told it was a separate class, we were all excited, and then a few short weeks was taken away, no one there explained why.
Yeah. That is a perfect, that is a perfect question, and I'd be happy to explain that. I'm so glad you asked that, because there's a really great reason, and you're gonna have some gratitude to express to the teachers' union. So the eight-month talks with the teachers' association concluded about a month or so ago, right? Like, so at the conclusion of those talks, one of the last items that we talked through was class size, because teachers are really anxious about class size too. So kids want small class size, parents want small class size, teachers want small class size. It's like a no-brainer. So we were talking through it, and I was lamenting some of the kindergarten class sizes, because they weren't always gonna be this good, up until that little change that was made recently. And the association came up with this idea that if they were to, if a portion of their membership at the top of the salary scale were to forego their salary increase for one year, it would free up about $40,000. And they said, if you put in kindergarten for us, we'll give you that money. So at the 11th hour, you all found out that there was this new change, and I couldn't explain it to you then, because the teachers, the negotiations part had concluded, they hadn't concluded their ratification, and we hadn't taken a vote yet. So I was promised the money, like, I'm there in the outskirts saying, okay, you all can count on this additional kindergarten support. And that reduced the class sizes at Bagnell and Page. That one additional teacher had an effect on two schools. But I couldn't say anything, because we hadn't ratified, we didn't ratify until May 29th, and we didn't approve until the following Tuesday, so I think June 3rd. And let me just look here at the letter that you all got for the kindergarten. I think it went out May 23rd. So you all got the information before I could really officially let anybody know about anything. So we were in a tight spot, but I wanted to give you relief, because I was getting questions about high class sizes. I had to bring staffing patterns into alignment, like, I had to tell my kindergarten teacher not to leave, that we were gonna continue with her. So I do apologize, sometimes things happen that I can't always explain until later. So that's an example of one of them. Does that help?
I'm still left, so the teachers' union afforded $40,000 for a teacher full day, but that also led to another, say, $28,000, because we had a lottery in place. And, I mean, I'm sorry to say that some children didn't get the lottery, but I don't understand how we went from 37 full-day kids, and then five send up for half, and then maybe this village of the old Ridge, or kids coming in from, whatever, over the summer. I just don't understand how Sweetser and Bagnell, or Bagnell still have a half-day classroom, two actually, at one of the schools, and both schools, and we don't even have one half-day classroom. How, every kid who wanted full day got it.
Yeah.
But how we wanted this individual half-day class, it worked out so well last year for our daughters.
I can explain.
And I just, I mean, we hear that they will ostracize this year, or that they will put on buses early, and I know you're trying to fix that, and I understand that.
Yeah, I can explain. So if I take one of those half-day kindergarten slots from Bagnell or from Sweetser and put it in over at Page, it's not a doable situation, because the teacher would have to leave her class, come and start a class late at the other school. It's not a doable situation. That's actually what I was gonna have to make work, before the teachers' union gave me that additional flexibility. So I don't know how I was gonna do it, but that's what I was gonna have to do. That's why you all were gonna get PM, and Bagnell was gonna get AM. So I had a teacher that I was coaching through, or giving some psychotherapy to during this time, when she knew she was gonna be split, and she kept saying, how am I gonna do this? Because the times don't allow for me to actually go and set up my classroom and do the work. And I said, don't worry, it's gonna work out, it's gonna work out. And it did, but not in the way that we had originally planned. So they had those positions already in place, so in order for me to take a position, I'd have to take it and move it to another school, which doesn't make sense to me, it just makes hard feelings that way. So with five students wanting the AM or PM kindergarten, the half-day kindergarten, the best choice that we could make was to integrate them in AM, so they wouldn't miss any school. And I do have to do some work with my staff to make sure that they're included in a very appropriate way. So the rough spots, I gotta work on with my staff, but that's the explanation for it.
How would you measure the success or failure of that endeavor, in all months or in several months?
Well, it's not even gonna matter, because I just let you know that next year, we're gonna be moving to, you know, additional staffing, so it will take care of itself. So...
So I mean, it would indicate whether it was a good way to go for future bumps in population?
Yeah, it could. Yeah, you're right. Some of it is just about satisfaction, you know. So I can't, I don't have, at the end of kindergarten, I don't have measurable, you know, academic measures and that sort of thing. The kids are little kids. But the parent satisfaction is really what I count on, you know, student satisfaction, teacher satisfaction, you know, the anecdotal information is really more important sometimes than any official stuff, you know, testing. So I'll listen carefully and see how it all went. There are lots of different arrangements that could be made, and I've lived through a lot of those different arrangements. And the best solution for us is to actually put in the teaching staff that we need, so we don't have to face this sort of thing, you know, in the near future. So that's what I'm committing to in the next round, the budget round. You'll see that my staffing patterns will continue to reshape, you know, across the elementary, and you'll get some relief at Page, just like Bagnell will get an additional first-grade teacher next year, because they have, they have three teachers in first grade, they have four classes coming in from kindergarten, so they're gonna need an additional teacher there.
Neither of them mentioned you at Page with the special... Neither of them mentioned you at Page with the special needs. You've effectively added 1.7 resources, but with two people retiring, isn't that still a net of negative 1.3 resources?
So, you mean, there's a net loss to the school? Is that what you're saying?
In educational resources, yeah. So, it's accumulated 1.7, right? I mentioned two people from 1.8, three people from 1.8 to one full, someone from 1.4 to 1.5. You have the numbers, I'm sure. I mean, I believe it all, I have 1.7 resources.
Well, I only know of one teacher...I think I only have one classroom teacher who's retiring.
Two.
Two over at Page?
Beth and Star.
Oh, you are correct.
Principal's office.
Yep, so I have used some positions. The assistant principal position, I have used creatively. You're exactly right. Yeah. But next year, I'll be bringing in staff to make things right again. So, I have to look at, where are the critical functions of the system? And I can't always just keep resources at one particular school, you know? So, for instance, part of the consolidation of the assistant principal at Bagnell relied... I mean, at Page relied on the consolidation of the salary line from Bagnell too. Otherwise, I couldn't have provided the support...the additional support actually went to Page when I consolidated those, that support. That's where the psychologist...you get the school support coordinator and the psychologist onto that, when I consolidate those two salary lines. So, it's not that the money stays, the salaries just stay at one school. I have to look at...I pool the resource, and then I have to redistribute as I can, you know, to meet everybody's need.
It just seems...I'm sorry, I don't mean to dwell on it. It just seems that I've been a half-day parent three times now.
Yeah.
Three times I've been made to feel slighted because I'm half-day, and I don't pay the full day.
Yeah.
And this was just another case of that. We went for that information night, and I can't speak for everyone here, but as a half-day parent, I just...it was embarrassing that they couldn't answer anything, and then-
I know.
...to get a note that says, basically, if you don't like these choices, you have the choice to go to Bagnell or Sweetser for bonus. You get to stay there until sixth grade with no transportation. And I'm saying that that's not a viable option, because I have two children at Page. I have a son that volunteers with me at Page. He calls it his school.
Yeah, yeah.
And I can't look at him and say, "But you're going to go there," because that's all we can come up with. And, you know, I'm sorry, but they took more full-day kids instead of you money. And I just...it just does not...I don't understand it. I don't see it as a viable option. And I understand you can't just put five children's needs ahead of everybody else, but what would have happened to those other children had you abided by the lottery? Would that have made sufficient numbers? I mean, that third teacher position that you're using in kindergarten, why couldn't that a position have been to fulfill a half-day slot?
Because the-
The preschool teacher who was removed too. And last year, they had a preschool teacher that stayed there, and she taught preschool in the morning and kindergarten in the afternoon, and it seemed to work out well.
Because if I used it for the half-day slot, I would have a waiting list for full-day K, and I'd also have very high numbers for full-day K. So, this was the best way to manage the numbers and give everybody the quality K experience. So, I hear what you're saying, and I'm sorry you've been in that position three times in a row. I'm trying to make the best decision I can for the whole system. And next year, in first grade, you'll have a really good experience, because you'll be dividing 24 and 23 by three, not two, because we'll have an additional teacher there.
But no additional teacher for the overcrowded, or the hiring of our first grades this year?
Not for this year, but as I said, if we get some additional enrollment, then I can look at providing some additional support or relief. A teacher, hiring a teacher would be my last resort. It doesn't mean it wouldn't happen. It means it's my last resort.
I have a daughter that's going to be at Page in the first grade.
Yes, okay.
So, can you talk about additional support? What numbers do you see of kids in classes to prompt you to get something or something like that?
I'm not sure. The minute I say that one more student comes in, and then I'll do it, you know? I'd rather just take a look. It could be that when I start the school year, maybe I'm able to find some support that goes in immediately. I've got to look at what my finances are and balance that with the level of support that's needed. So, I can't commit right now to something that isn't there. I'll be monitoring it, just like I will for the other class sizes. There are other class sizes at 24, as I said, at Donahue. I've got to look at those and be mindful of everybody's needs. So, I'm committing to doing that, and so far, I think you can see that I've been working hard to get everybody to where we want to be. This isn't where I want to be either. So, you know, it's a hard point for everybody to see that we've got a little bit more work to do.
My thing is, what happens if the kindergarten classes, if more people start signing up? This is a huge thing, but I'll go for myself after this meeting, and my daughter won't go full day next year, because I do not want to pay the full day amount to have. I don't think that that will be the super.
Uh-huh. That's right.
Even if it starts special, so we do all sorts of hard stuff.
Sure.
So, and I know I've heard a number of people that they have the same complaint, but they're not here this evening.
Yeah.
What happens if those numbers keep increasing for our half-day?
Well, then I'll have to take a look at that, you know? So, I'll monitor. I'll make sure I make as good a decision as I can, and you all are free to, you know, send me your concerns as well. So, if you're getting sensitive to something that's not happening, either with the program, the teaching staff, or the numbers, feel free to send it to me. I'm open to that. So, feedback is a good thing. I'm always open to feedback. It doesn't mean that I can always agree, but we could at least have a discussion about what it is, and if I don't know about it, it would be a good thing. So, I'm open to that.
I'm just wondering if you had any discussions with the kindergarten teachers to see how this year played out for the half-day kids?
Mm-hmm.
Are they all on target with the full-day kids? Do they...how do the teachers like it? I mean, are they juggling to try to remember who's going on the bus, who's going off, who's not?
Well, I think with five students, it's not going to be too difficult. So, I mean-
I think the question was for this card here.
This card here.
Yeah.
Your closing.
Yeah. So, last year, we also made do with what was...what we had. I don't control what goes on in the classroom, so I give resources, and the principal takes it from there. So, I can tell you that there's already been some dissatisfaction expressed about what occurred. I've already worked with the principal. She's already worked with the teaching staff. So, I think we've got some realignment to how we're going to approach things for next year. So, I don't think this year went as smoothly as it could be, and I think next year will be a better scenario. So, are we all set for tonight? All right. Well, I do appreciate you coming and listening and attending to all this. I know it's a lot of information, and I am open to you calling or emailing. So, my only ask is if you could screen out some of the emotion that comes through, it makes it easier on me, as I'm reading the email in particular. So, send me whatever's on your mind. I'm happy to work with you as we move forward. Okay? Thanks very much.
Thank you. On the new business of recognition?
Yes, definitely. So, we do have a recognition tonight. Jen Perlich is here, and we also have Joan Reynolds, who's here. And if you might just come up and be recognized. So-
Laura.
So, I know I went through a lot tonight about special education resources and how we're trying to repair our system. And Joan and Jen have been so instrumental in us figuring things out and helping out, not just the elementary, the elementary, middle, and high school, the whole system. They have been so great in understanding where the system is. It's not our individual wants or needs here or there, and it has been our pleasure. Mike is not able...Mike Darbas isn't able to be here tonight, but he and I have had the great pleasure of working with both of you, and it has been terrific. We've had really great conversations with bringing issues to the table and working them out. And we wouldn't be where we are right now if it wasn't for your great assistance. So, I do want to thank you.
Thank you.
And just a commercial, if anybody wants to fill in for presidents or co-presidents. Or if it's Special Education Parental Advisory Council, we need some applicants, right? Well, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
In general, that's what we're doing. We had one request from Chris Radding. She wanted to be on Business, Finance, and Operations or Policy. My suggestion, if she's agreeable, is to go to the Business, Finance, and Operations, and that will leave an opening on Teaching, Learning, and Accountability. If anybody else who's already on it...you don't have to get off the one you're on, but if anybody else would like to join in on that one, you can send an email to Jeff or myself anytime in the next week or so.
Can you just repeat that? I was looking for something in here. We're swapping?
We're swapping anything, nope. Chris is going to join. Let me just say what I would like to-
Also, it's going to be four members.
I would like to...yes. I'd like to propose the Business, Finance, and Operations will be Jack, Jill, Brian, and Chris Radding.
So, that'll also give us a...if somebody's not available to sign-
Yeah.
That still gives us three.
It's a good thing.
And with the subcommittees, it's my understanding that the chair appoints the chair of the subcommittee. So, on that subcommittee, I'd like to have Jack be the chair of that, simply because you've been there for so dang long. Human Resources will stay the same, Doug, Jill, and Joanna. And Jill would be good enough to chair that one. Teaching, Learning, and Accountability is currently Joanna and Doug, and if anybody else has an interest, there'll be an opening on that. And Joanna would be good enough to chair that. Policy would be Lisa, Wayne, and myself, and Wayne would be the chair of that. So, I don't think we need a motion on that.
Appointments, yeah.
Relative to subcommittees, we have Crest, which Chris Radding has been our representative this past year, which I have appreciated. She's requested to be on it again this year if possible. My suggestion would be that we say thank you and endorse her to do that.
We do need a motion for that.
We'll do that, yeah.
I make a motion to appoint Chris Radding to our Crest representative.
Second.
And as far as discussion, I only have one, I don't say caveat, but if after your monthly meetings at Crest, if you could give us a two-minute update at the school committee meetings, I think that's...we're not going to grill you, and you...but just to keep in touch with it, it would be appreciated. So, all in favor of the motion? Thank you, Chris. Summer meetings?
None.
Unanimous.
But we have business. Join me.
A little as possible.
Um, yeah. Chris, do we want to go with the dates?
Yes. I figured you would.
With the July schedule, different things going on, and I asked everybody if you were available on Monday, July 14th. Does that work?
July what?
14th. It's a Monday.
I think I-
You told me no.
I totally-
I can't.
And Lisa's away. Or do we want to move it to...what was the reason we couldn't have it on the 22nd?
I won't be here.
I'm away the 22nd.
I think there were multiple people away.
Is there anything we have to vote on?
Well, we don't-
Yes, there'll be an item to be voted in July.
Is there...what about the 15th, that regular meeting?
That doesn't work with the office schedule. Unless you go all the way to July 29th.
What about the week before? What is that, April 7th or 8th?
I know, it's tough. July's hard.
Mm-hmm.
Well-
Try the 14th.
We've bored them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for listening.
You guys want to be here, so.
A little hot in here.
My suggestion is the 14th, because I don't think we're going to have a higher success rate.
I want the week after the 4th.
Thank you, Brian.
That doesn't work.
It doesn't work that way. Can we try the 14th? We'll try the best we can on the 14th.
It's all up to you.
Works for me.
Okay.
Okay. So, it'll be seven out of the nine. Okay.
Seven o'clock?
No, seven out of nine.
Five o'clock.
Seven out of...five o'clock.
No, it's 6:30.
Six thirty. Keeping it the same, 6:30.
And then August is...
Be the 19th.
The 19th, which would be the standard August meeting. Does that work for everybody?
Sure.
Yeah, I'm on vacation. Okay, no Joanna.
You can come back to the meeting. All righty.
Okay.
Medication...yes, Jack?
Yes, Jeff.
Great. You're going to need the budget subsidy to be like-
The finance subcommittee?
Yeah.
The Williams explained to me was that I would just call the members in whenever there was a warrant that needed to be signed, and if we can continue that policy, that's fine. Works for me. The harder one will be on the panel, because Chris, the chair, doesn't like to sign it, so I'll have to get Joanna into signing the front page of that. But other than that, we'll just continue with the way you guys have done it in the past, and I'll email everybody when there's a warrant available, and you can stop by when you get a chance to take a look at it, ask questions, and sign it if you're okay.
Good.
We still pay bills every two weeks.
All righty. Medication delegation policy.
So, the medication delegation policy that you approved has now been PennTucketized. So, the approved policy that we got from the state that you all approved had to have some PennTucket information inserted. We've been through that. We've been through it with the school committee, the subcommittee, and we just...this is a formal...kind of a formal vote, just to adopt the PennTucket information that's in there.
Do I have a motion to accept the medication delegation policy?
I'll make a motion to accept the medication delegation policy.
Can I second it?
You can. Is there any discussion?
You can make the motion if you want.
Let's not backtrack.
Again, just for informational purposes, with our policies, if it's a unanimous vote, they become adopted immediately versus if there's a dissenting vote, then it has to come back for a second meeting. Just because in the previous meeting, we had a number of policies that passed, and it didn't say that they are-
Yeah.
-now implemented. So, just everybody's aware of that. All in favor of the motion?
Very good.
It's unanimous. Seats available for teachers' children?
Yes, so we have a new contract with the association, and we've adopted language that affords them the opportunity to bring their own child, as long as they're a teacher in the district. You all are in the position of approving annually seats that I recommend to you, if any. And this year, I'm able to recommend two half-day seats for kindergarten at Sweetser. So, those are the two positions that we would be able to advertise to our faculty as open, two half-day kindergarten seats at Sweetser. Now, the rationale for that is we have 11 students per class in the half-day, and we have 20 students in the full day. So, when you distribute the 20 and the 11, you'll come up with about 15 students per class as we go into first grade. So, that's why I'm very conservative here. So that's why I'm very conservative here. The other classes, I'm a little bit more conservative about, because we're in the high teens or the low twenties, so this is the one opportunity I think I'm feeling confident about that we could extend to our faculty.
Is there a particular date when you would offer this, because is there a cutoff date for kindergarten?
Well, right now, what I would do is, with your approval, I'd give two weeks to the faculty to respond to that, and then I would conduct a lottery for those two seats, if we don't, if we have more teachers who apply for their children, then we have seats available.
Can I ask a question? I know some of the negotiations, I wasn't involved, you have a little more information.
Yeah.
Do the teachers have to be teaching at Sweetser, or just within the district?
No, just within the district, and there are two levels that we would go through in filling the seats. First level would be for teachers who have professional status in the district, typically we, you'd refer to that as tenure, and then we would open that, if there were still seats available, we could open it to non-tenured teachers as well. Now, the thing to remember is, you have to be a teacher in the district in order for your child to attend. So if you leave for some reason, your child would follow you if they were attending school here.
And if you stay as a teacher in the district, the child moves up through the grades without a reapplication or anything?
That's right. Yep, exactly right. Maria has a question.
And the question you want to add, too, that the teacher must be full-time staff?
Yes.
To qualify.
Exactly right, yeah.
And the agenda, just to discuss, we don't need to vote, you're just informing us?
No, I'd like you to approve those seats, so that would be a vote for you to, to take. Because I can't move forward unless you approve the seats.
Anybody wanna make a motion?
No.
Snack in?
I'll snack in.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Great, thank you very much, we'll get that right out.
We can skip the next one, right?
That's sort of what I was thinking, I had a question, but I've gone-
Any questions?
Class size comes up again under the new business, so the people out there don't have an agenda. I think it's been covered pretty thoroughly. What's up with Jeff?
I'm, I'm set.
Surplus equipment.
Surplus equipment.
Yeah, I have a question.
With the, with the, with the start of the grounds project, we were required to begin the cleanup work of the grounds, with moving trailers and things in their way. I know it's been discussed in the past, we do have an inventory attached to it, these are all pieces of equipment that the district no longer has any use for. If the committee votes to declare all these items surplus, we will go through the processes that's gone through in the past, we will offer them to the member communities, whatever's left after that, we'll go through the normal disposition of assets process under Massachusetts law, which is kind of the reverse of procurement. If it's got a value of under $5,000, we can dispose of it at any means we deserve, we want to do. If it's got a value between more than $5,000, we will put in, either have an auctioneer or put an ad in the paper for people to make bids on the individual items, until they're all gone.
What kind, what kind of equipment are you talking about?
It should be attached to the document.
The whole list and the package.
Should be a inventory list?
Two pages of equipment.
Scrubbers, floor vacs, all kinds of things.
Lots of strippers.
There's, there's one thing on there that I did not saw.
Stripper, okay.
There's, there's one thing on there that I did not see that I asked, get rid of, or do something with it, and it's the elevator out there.
For the, for the press box?
Yes.
We're not sure what that status of that is yet.
We're still working with it.
We're working with that, because maybe it'll be retrofitted with, we're working with a group of people who are willing to throw some actual, provide steel, and they have expertise in it.
Okay.
They'll do it, so we don't wanna put that on the list.
There's gotta be a number, uh-
No, it won't be a repeat.
This is, this is gonna be, be by September, you may have that option, but hopefully by then we'll have an answer for you.
Can I ask who put the list together and made the notes as far as the evaluation of the condition?
Greg Hadden.
Now, why does some of it say "keep," but it's on the list to be disposed of? Like, does the number of items keep or excess?
Extractor, the high school keep.
There's a dozen of them that say "keep."
Yeah, there's-
So if we're gonna make a motion to get rid of the stuff, anything that says "keep" on-
Are we going to be seeing in next year's budget, retract?
I don't know, retract or the budget retract, or?
The budget is extract.
No?
No.
No.
Retract.
Extract.
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 Why do we have so much excess, because a lot of this seems competitive?
We bought, um, there was a purchase made, I guess, two years ago it looks like, an lease purchase agreement, where they bought a vehicle, a small pickup.
I think it was actually three years ago.
It was a small pickup, and a whole bunch of custodial equipment, they bought a lease purchase, took place a lot of this.
Remember all the stuff that was in the cafeteria, box, and everything?
That's before I got in. Yeah, so, me too, so I just paid the bill.
We did a motion.
Does anybody have a comment? I think we're going to be, we're going to have a recommendation on, uh, I told you about the, 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 the,[1447.12]